Good evening and welcome to the regular twice monthly meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. Please note that our meetings, although open to the public here at City Hall, will continue to be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge of the flag followed by a moment's silence. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The topics of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on September 13th. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have one item on our consent calendar tonight. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll move, Mr. President. I'll second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Kavachi and a second by Mr. Hoff to approve. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Report from the mayor. Mayor Becker.
Hi. I'll just keep it short since I'm remaining virtual this evening for right now. Had a great Fall Fest, although I couldn't make it down to the festivities. It was great to have the parade and see the folks out for the kickoff for the Fall Fest. I will just say that I did meet with the new director of the Carroll Arts Center. I just popped in about two weeks ago and had a really great conversation, and I think that we're going to get some really amazing things done between the city and the arts center. Really, and I know our last meeting was a little short, so just to follow up on a few things from that, really enjoying working with our new city administrator, Ms. Sarah Imholtz, who this is her second meeting now with us, and I think that we've got a really fantastic year, a few years ahead of us. And I'll just keep it short, Mr. President, and back to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor. We'll move on now to reports from standing committees. Begin with the Arts Council liaison, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we'll follow up on the mayor's report. I do think that we should all be excited about the new director, Eric Kirchner. I think we're going to do some great things with him in October. Coming up, events at the Carroll Arts Center. In October, they will feature a series of horror movies. Horror movies, horror movies every night, October 25th through the 29th. The week ends with the art center's annual late night screening of the Rocky Horror Picture Show on Friday, October the 29th, at 10 o'clock. Coming up on Thursday, September the 30th, is a reception for the annual member show. It's scheduled from 5:00 to 7:00, and this event is also going to serve as a farewell event for the outgoing executive director, Dr. Judy Morley, and it's also going to be yet another opportunity for folks to meet the new executive director, Eric Kirchner. I attended the monthly annual meeting of the Carroll Arts Council on Wednesday, September the 15th. It was an in-person meeting, and it was the first in-person meeting for quite some time. We had no meetings in July and August, so we had a lot of catching up to do. We welcomed some new board members, Frank Baylor, Diane Hurd, Jesse Hardisty, and Jan Flora. Let's see, at that meeting, I also had the opportunity to make a presentation about the Westminster Recreation and Parks Advisory Board's mural initiative. Cindy May volunteered to be on that committee. For those who do not know Cindy May, she's a very talented artist, and she's an engineer that worked with the county a number of years ago. I worked with her a number of years ago at the county. She's very talented. I also like the fact that she's an engineer, and she'll be a big plus for that project. Some other folks, a lot of folks wanted to be involved in that, but I just, the advisory board said they only wanted one person, so I just, I told everyone that I would just keep everybody up to date. That's my report, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. Economic and Community Development, Mr. Hoff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will just mention, we have our next Economic and Community Development Committee meeting on October the 6th at 3:00 PM. We were hoping to originally have some agenda items that would be here tonight, but we really kind of wanted to give the committee a chance just to fine tune things if there was any fine tuning to do, and so hopefully those three items will be coming to the council on the 11th. Additionally, I have been meeting with our new city administrator to kind of discussing, you know, kind of the future agenda items for that committee, because we have a lot that we want to accomplish, but we want to do it in reasonable bites and not all at once, obviously. So we've been kind of having some communication regarding that, and we look forward to continuing to get a lot done over the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll just report that we have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday. Forward to meeting with the committee, the mayor, and city staff to get an update on a couple of issues, including the American Rescue Plan funds, and so we will be doing that on Wednesday. Personal, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Kavachi.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have two letters of recognition that I would like to go to all of your attention that the chief put out to his staff. The first one is to Sergeant Donovan, Corporal De Angelis, and PFC, how do you say his last name?
Chinaki.
Chinaki, is that how you pronounce it?
Sure.
Thank you. PFC Chinaki. I'm not going to read the entire letter, but basically, they handled a welfare check, and a citizen felt compelled to send in a letter praising their actions, and he specifically talked about the dignity and the concern for the individual's well-being, how professional they were, and how they really represented the Westminster Police Department in such a positive light. So those three officers are to be commended, and I know we're all very appreciative of the action that they took on that welfare check. The second one, I'm actually going to read a little bit of this. It's, I think, pretty impactful. This was sent to Corporal Jesse Claggett and PFC Corey Ty. I'm not going to obviously talk about the individual's name, but this person sent in a letter, and she says, I don't, this is in a letter that is titled "Saving Her Life." She says, "I don't matter much. I woke up in an ambulance Saturday night on a specific date after being clean and working my NA program. I relapsed and overdosed for the first time, and it will be the last time in my life. I do not know who called 911. I just remember being in my car, then everything went black after I decided to do just one more. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who saved my life that night. I've never been so terrified, confused, and mad at myself. God gave me another chance to live, and I just have to say thank you so much for being there so I could be here today. I am forever grateful." So that's, to me, that's pretty impactful. You know, we, you know, police officers have a hard job, and it's not an easy thing to do, and they catch a lot of flak, not from this community, fortunately, but you know, these are the types of things that our officers are doing on a regular, ongoing basis, and it's nice to bring it to everyone's attention when we receive feedback from the public like that, especially some that's so impactful. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Thank you very much for sharing that. Public Works Committee, back to you again.
Yeah, so a couple of things for Public Works. Number one, as you all know, we had some pretty significant flooding a week or so ago. Our inflows at the Wayzor Treatment Plant were almost double its capacity, yet due to the hard work and diligence of the staff there, they never once actually exceeded, got us into a violation status at the treatment plant, which is pretty impressive. The Streets Department, Utilities Department, they had their hands full during those storms, but in the end, I don't believe anyone was really impacted by it here in town because, in large part, due to their hard work. I'd also like to bring to everyone's attention, not attention, just like to comment that, you know, and I'm sure we'll talk probably a little more, well, Abby's not here, but you know, Fall Fest was a huge success. I know everybody was really, you know, had a great time, and I'm sure some council comments will speak to it, but you know, we forget about the work that the Streets Departments and the Utilities Guys, the guys in Public Works, what they do to make that happen. It's funny, my wife and I went down Saturday evening, and we were actually there until close, and we were walking out, and here's all these guys. It was obvious they had been there probably all day, working their rear end off. You know, they're all kind of hanging out, waiting for everybody to leave so they could pick up trash and clean up and do all the things, and then, of course, the next day, they got to come back and tear it all down. It's a tremendous amount of work for the Public Works Department, and they're pretty unsung, and I just wanted to express my gratitude, and I'm sure all of you agree with me, that they do a heck of a good job to make these events happen. And it's not just Fall Fest, it's many of our downtown events. I think folks tend to lose sight of what goes into these things on the Public Works Department side. I think that is everything that I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. And Recreation and Parks, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Recreation and Parks Advisory Board met on the Diffendall Lot. We met on the Diffendall Parking Lot on Thursday, September the 14th, for a firsthand review of the opportunity for the city to sponsor having a mural painted on the newly reinforced wall on the old Palace Livery stable wall. Attending the meeting were Mr. Wogman and Chair Jessica Laird, Steve Zaleski, Jennifer Lang, Aaron Burrows, and Abby Gruber, and we were really fortunate to have the city administrator and the Public Works Director also attend because they were a huge help. What we did in that meeting is we went over baseline nuts and bolts and particulars of the project, including things such as timelines, protocols, and formulating a request for proposals. And for those not familiar with the project, Director Glass brought up the idea for a mural last fall as we were in the process of approving capital maintenance project on the old Palace Livery stable wall. There's a history and tradition of murals in Westminster, especially advertising murals, and of course, the most visible mural these days is the mural on Locust Lane, but many years ago, there was a great mural featuring Mickey Mouse on the Stockdale Building, and it was up for a number of years. It was painted right after the Gear Hardware Store had been taken down, and it took up pretty much the whole, this other, the eastern side of the Stockdale Building. So lots of exciting things coming up with the Rec and Parks Advisory Board. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report for the Technology Committee. Move on to council comments and discussion. Mr. Hoff.
Yes, I just have a few comments. The mayor and Mr. Kavachi already touched on it, but I think you have a different perspective, you know, once you're, you know, elected official or on staff. I've been around a long time, have enjoyed Fall Fest a lot over the years as a community member, but there really is so much involved that goes into it, and again, I'm appreciative of all the staff, everybody on Parks and Rec, Public Works, the Police Department, because it is so much involved. And while we had actual beautiful weather, for the most part for the event, these poor people had to set up in very trying circumstances. The weather, the 48 hours before Fall Fest started was not pleasant, and yet, everything was ready for Thursday night and for the parade. So I really commend all our staff in that regard. I also, we had another big festival this weekend, or first time, the Good Game Fest. Actually took my son, my youngest son, out to that on Sunday. It was the first time, it seemed to go over pretty well. My son really enjoyed it, so that's good. And I do also want to mention that we took a tour of Exploration Commons recently, which is in the basement of the library in Westminster, and I was just blown away by that. I'm really excited for that to open up. I'm really excited to kind of see what the library and what kind of collaborations the city can do with that. Just, it's going to be a phenomenal space for this town. And then lastly, I just wanted to kind of pay my respects to our city clerk, who is moving on to different pastures. I really, really enjoyed working with you during the campaign, because obviously I had to contact you a lot because you were very involved in that, and I know that's not always fun at times, but I, I'm sorry to see you go, because I really enjoyed working with you. So, and that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Mr. Kavachi.
That's a tough one to follow up, because you pretty much touched on just about all the things I wanted to say, so.
Sorry.
Ditto to what Councilman Huff said. How about that?
All right, very good. Ms. Gilbert.
Well, I believe Councilman Huff is stealing all of our highlights for our comments, so I will briefly touch on a few things and kind of add to a few. Yes, many of us, Councilman Huff, as you mentioned, Councilman Pecorera, and Councilman Dayhoff, and myself, all toward the library commons, and I along was also wowed by the immense project that has been undertaken by them. I believe, if I remember, 14,000 square feet, if I.
I think so.
If I'm remembering correctly, full of 3D printers, laser printers, conference rooms, and teaching kitchens, I think we're all going to be looking to the opening of that and what that brings to our downtown. I have a few more things. As Veterans Day approaches, I wanted to highlight the Carroll County Veterans Day Independence Project announcing their boots, blue jeans, and barn dance fundraiser October 16th with a keynote speaker of Elizabeth McCormick, who is a former Black Hawk helicopter pilot and is named one of the 30 top motivational speakers in the world, so she will be gracing Westminster with her presence on that day. Also wanted to congratulate Parks and Rec, the city police, and Public Works for yet another successful Westminster Fall Fest. I'd kind of like to know what number we're up to. Is it like 46? Did I see that?
Oh, no.
No, not that. It's more than that. Okay. It was kind of up there. It surprised me when I heard it over the weekend.
Started in 78.
So just, I'll touch briefly on that one, and Good Game Fest, it was an excellent turnout. I believe all the organizers were happy with that. I spent Sunday there, and they are now already looking and planning toward next year for another Game Fest. So congratulations to Magic for a good event. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Mr. Dayhoff.
Wanted to echo the remarks that my colleagues shared about Fall Fest. I also wanted to mention, a shout out to Tiame Page, the owner of Cultivated, for putting together Westminster After Dark on Friday evening. We'll look forward to bringing back Midnight Madness next year after our challenges with COVID-19, but I saw, I believe I saw the council president there. Who else did I see there? I saw a number of folks there, and that was good. Yeah, big shout out to Rec and Parks, Abby and Heather, and Jesse, and Stephanie, and Melissa, and the Street Department, and the Police Department for all the hard work. But Chief, I have a special shout out for Officer Juan Rojas. The line at the ticket booth went all the way up to City Hall and did not, did not subside for two hours straight, and everybody was packed right there at that entranceway, and the line, the line stayed long for that whole time, and everybody was very nice, and it all went very smoothly. But we asked Officer Rojas if he would just hang around, and not only did he hang around, but he chatted everybody up, he answered questions, he helped. It was just really good stuff. So if you could mention to him how much we really appreciated that, because he really went out of his way. He really did. I think he also helped with some Spanish-speaking folks, so that was all good. And forget about meatloaf, and forget about sweet potato pie. I have had it reinforced that the key to Councilman Kavachi's heart is a Fall Fest funnel cake. We must get that into the record. Let's see, next up, we're looking forward to the annual Westminster Oyster Stroll on October the 9th, and that afternoon, we'll also have an open house at the Westminster Fire Department. Let me see what else I got here. I attended the PFLAG meeting with Dr. Becker, and Chief Ledwell, and Councilmember Dan Huff attended that meeting. That meeting was on September the 19th, and I also attended the Community Services Council meeting on Wednesday, September the 23rd, at the Carroll Nonprofit Center. The bulk of the meeting was former Westminster Councilmember Sam Greenholz, and made a presentation about the literacy council. He did a great job, and Sam specifically asked that I say hi to everyone. Couple of other routine things that we've had on our agenda for quite some time. I'm looking forward to getting an update in the future on our initiative to update and improve our parking meters. I heard a lot about our parking meters over the weekend, and still looking forward to an update and strengthening our property maintenance code, and Mr. Hoff and I have discussed that, and I think you're on top of that, so I'll look forward to that. And many thanks for the recent distribution of the proposed demolition permit. I guess my concern, were written into the ordinance that the mayor and council are to be notified, and I guess my concern continues about the loss of key historic properties in the community. And in addition, Mr. President, to the demolition permit notification, I'd really, really like to be, for whoever council members would like to be added to the distribution list that already exists on the special permits, so that when we're asked about what event is at Belgro Square, or what event is at City Hall, or the playground, we have some idea as to what that event is after the mayor signs it. But thought maybe you had some thoughts on a demolition permit?
Yeah, well, I think it's, I'm glad you mentioned that, because, you know, I think it's a, I think you made a good point. It's a significant issue. You know, I've noticed, you know, over time, that, you know, we used to talk a lot about historical life. We used to talk a lot about the.
Yeah, we did.
We had toward downtown, and we, I'm afraid we're losing a lot of that. We have lost a lot of that, and I think that that's something we really need to give some thought to. You know, you can't bring back some of these buildings. Some of these buildings are probably going to be replaced anyway, you know, and it's good to, you know, it's good to know that they're being replaced. We may need to update our archiving requirements, because I think we wrote those some years ago, the technology, you know, the standards were in a different place, and it might be worth looking at what the best practices are on that now. But in addition to that, I think that as people start replacing some of these structures, and particularly as we start looking at the redevelopment, you know, downtown Westminster, we hope to spark by, you know, the rehabilitation of the old bank building where we now have the city administrative offices, you know, the project that we hope will take place, the old Stockdale property, you know, we hope to see new things happen, but when they do happen, I think we want to make sure that the architectural standards that are in place reflect the kind of historic feel for our downtown that we used to talk about and that we really want to have. So, you know, I hope, you know, Mr. Depot and his team will keep a look at that, and I also think, you know, we need to, you ask the Historic District Commission, you know, to maybe be focused on that as well. You know, I know their role in the past has been limited to, in terms of the district itself, just two properties that are in the district, so it's not much to do, but, and some other things, but I think that maybe, they might be a group, good group to give us some advice, and maybe, you know, give some thought to, you know, what this ought to look like going forward. So I'm hopeful that we can, we can dig into that a little bit more. Thank you for raising that, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you for following up.
That concludes council comments.
Mr. President, may I mention one other thing real quick?
Certainly, ma'am.
So just one other comment that I had neglected during my mayor's report. Mr. Glass and I gave a well-received presentation at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon on Westminster's Pure Water Initiative. I think we spoke to probably, there were maybe about 40 or 50 people in the audience. We gave a brief background on the development of the Pure Water Initiative, how it works, and what the plans are moving forward, and I think by all accounts, it was very well received by the audience that was there.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Becker. It's good to know that you were able to start sharing information on that, like there's some important stakeholders in the community.
So, Mr. President.
Mr. Kavachi.
So this is discussion as well, so if I can just.
Sure.
Quickly, you know, I think Councilmember Dayhoff brought something up that I completely agree with. It would be good if we had some kind of way to know what's happening, because there are definitely events that occur that I don't know what they are, and people come up to me, and they're like, hey, what's going on over here? And I'm like, geez, I don't really know. So I don't, I'm sure there's something you guys already have in place that probably has that. It'd be great if we could, you know, be tied into that. I think that's a really great point.
Let's ask the city administrator to take a look at that and come back to us with a recommendation on how to best achieve that.
And, Mr. President, I just wanted to make one other comment in reference to, you know, the demo and some of the issues surrounding that. That is something that the city administrator and I talked about, you know, addressing in the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Which is a good place to do it.
Yes, and I think that's an important issue to address, and I think it's, and I don't want to get into all the back and forth here, because it's not the place, but it is a really important issue, and it's really important that we kind of get the balance right, because I think some places kind of take it too far, and, but yet, I think it's critical that, that you don't allow certain significant structures to just randomly be torn down. And I also tend to agree that if a property is going to be redeveloped, it should be somewhat respectful to the character of the surrounding community, because having been in real estate a long time, I've seen a lot of infill properties that are built. Some of them do a very good job with being, and I'm sure Mr. Depot can relate to this, do a very good job with keeping, they're new, they're obviously new, but they kind of fit. They vibe, for lack of a better word, with the overall community. And then I've seen some, and I could name specific properties, but I won't right here, right now, where it just seems so out of place and so out of character. But again, I do have strong leanings towards property rights as well, so it's a balancing act, and I, and I want, it's an issue that we're going to have to really dig into and kind of make sure we get that balance right, and I think we can. It's just going to take some, a lot of thought and work on our part.
Well, we own one. I mean, you know, we all during the redevelopment of the city administrative building, we all bemoaned the fact that there just wasn't much we could do about, you know, how it looked, but, you know, without incredible expense, but, you know, it clearly is out of character with what, you know, what the rest of the street had looked like. So, you know, something we need to keep in mind.
It's out of character for any street I'm aware of.
Good point.
Mr. President.
Well said, Mr. Kavachi. Yes, Mr. Dayhoff.
Thank you. Mr. Kavachi, just a quick follow up. The email distribution already exists for the special permit events, so all we, it's a piece of cake. All we got to do is just be added. So I think that'll be a huge help. Not a week goes by in which I'm asked about an event, and I'm not aware of the event. So I think that would be a big help, because we're the ambassadors for the, for the city and for the community. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could just add one thing to that, instead of, and I agree, I think that we should, you know, instead of jumping to the email list, let Ms. Imholtz see if there might be a little bit of a better way to go about it, because I think, too, if we could all have access to a calendar where these are posted, and I know Councilmember Gilbert has brought this up a couple times, that it would be nice to have a calendar of city events that are going on as well, and it might just be something that we have access to, a calendar that comes from somewhere in the administrative offices that we see that goes on, instead of yet filling up inbox with, with sort of daily events that we might miss, and then we could just go to one place to have a look. But I say, I say, just as you suggested, we turn it over to Ms. Imholtz and the administration team and let them see what the best solution might be.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. All right, move on now to the next item, which is bids. We have one bid for your consideration, Stephen, ADA sidewalk grant contract. Mr. Glass.
Yes, sir. The current capital projects fund includes funding for the continuation of our annual ADA sidewalk grant project. You may recall that this goes hand in hand with our annual paving contract as well, and is consistent with our agreement with the Department of Justice as well, continuation of the ADA support. The project was advertised on July 23rd, on the E. Maryland Marketplace, with the pre-bid meeting and bid due dates of August 5th and September 2nd, respectively. meetings and bid due dates of August fifth and September second, respectively. Should be also be noted, this all the work will need to be completed in the spring of twenty-two to meet the fiscal year end date of June thirty. We did get three bids with the lowest being from ECM Corporation for a total of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Second one was from DIR Construction Incorporated, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and ten. And the third one was from Greenbridge Construction Incorporated for two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Since that is reviewed and evaluated, these references proposed from ECM Corporation in their amount of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. We have a hundred thousand dollars in project funding. And what we propose is that the full one hundred thousand dollars is is approved. Just what that means is we'll get more work done in in this year than than we had approximated then. So as far as recommendation goes, we recommend the Mayor and Council accept the bid, ECM Corporation, for Washington, Maryland, up to the full budget, not to exceed now of a hundred thousand dollars for the placement of upgraded ADA sidewalk ramps to current standards. None of it included all the work necessary to complete the project as further described in bid documents. And of course authorize the mayor's execution of the associated contract. Be pleased to answer any questions if so.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Glass. We've heard Mr. Glass's report and recommendation. They have a motion to approve the bid?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
The motion by Ms. Gilbert is a second?
Second.
And the second by Mr. Dayhoff? Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify that up to not only to accept the bid, but to spend up to the budgeted amount of a hundred thousand.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's clear what the motion is.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Gilbert.
I just have one question because just curious about it. So the lowest bid was sixty-eight thousand, the highest bid was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. That is a huge difference.
I would say they don't want to do the work.
So we run into that sometimes. That's quite the spread. In some cases, it's just the amount of, it comes down to, we're talking a little bit out there, we already have a whole lot of work. Well, if it's accepted, then we'll hire more staff. But otherwise, that's such an outlier that we, the other two are much closer. And actually, ECM Corporation, I should have mentioned, they've gotten this contract for the last four or so years. So we have a rather extensive relationship with them. They, at this point, be tough for me, hard pressed, I'd say, to discuss the two hundred and seventy-eight thousand further.
And that's it was just a wide, a really wide range. And my follow-up question is where, I know we're doing this again as our annual bid, where will the sidewalks and the paving be taking place this time around?
So this was ahead of the annual paving. And that was finished up and actually didn't finish up, it started back in the in the area of Whispering Meadows. And then Main Street extended, then also behind Safeway, we have that legs, do they? So this one does take place ahead of the paving, then the paving get right back. They're not the only places, but that's kind of where it'll start.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Any further discussion or questions? There are none of them. Under the vote, under the favor, please say aye. Aye, aye, or say nay, we have seen that, we have it. And the contract is approved. We have no ordinances or resolutions for this time. And we have no, let's see, we do, we have no unfinished business, which I'm aware. We have one item of new business, approval of a letter from the mayor and council to the Carroll County delegation to the General Assembly. And go to Councilman Huff, who's on here this week.
So this came about with some conversations that I had with Senator Reedy and actually you all, and I won't belabor this because we've shared a lot of emails back and forth, kind of fine tuning everything and kind of giving some of the background. But the delegation is going to be having a meeting on October sixth at seven P. M., which is an opportunity for all the mayors in Carroll County to present items that they would like the delegation's help to either get in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three capital budget for the governor or do a legislative bond initiative. So this is our opportunity to formally submit a letter, which Mayor Becker will present at the October sixth meeting. And the content of those letter, that letter is basically asking for help in relation to Wakeville Valley for the first phase to the tune of two point one million. And then also to ask for four hundred thousand towards the clock tower. Mayor Becker and myself and our city administrator, Ms. Imhals, met with Senator Reedy to kind of go over, there was multiple things on that list. These two, it was decided would make the most sense just from a a standpoint of trying to first get into the governor's capital budget. If we're unable to get into the governor's capital budget, then hopefully the delegation would be helping us with maybe doing a legislative bond initiative or some other programs or grants that would work. The legislative bond initiative would probably work well for the clock tower, not as well just for technical reasons for the Wakeville Valley. But this is a case where it's, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Because obviously, whatever state funding we can get for this is one less thing that are that we become would come out of local taxpayers, city of Westminster's funds, because we'd be getting it through the state. And I would certainly argue, and Mr. Kavachi has made this point to me before, and I think he's very, very right. You know, Wakeville Valley in particular is a hundred and eighty, I think it's going to be a hundred and eighty-seven acre park. It's going to be one of the largest regional parks in the area. And arguably, it's not just the citizens of Westminster that are going to be using it, as Mr. Kavachi has pointed out. It's all of Carroll County and even statewide. And I I think he has a very valid point with that. And certainly is another reason why that might be an attractive thing for the governor to consider putting into the capital budget. So that's a little bit of background. If anybody has any other questions about the letter, and I don't know if the mayor has anything to add in reference to that to this letter, because she was involved in some of the background meetings that we had. Mayor Becker, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, I don't have much to add. I think that you really covered the 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 basis of that letter. I think we had a really great conversation, you, myself and and Ms. Imhals with Senator Reedy when we talked about some of these items that we might be able to put forward. And I know, I believe the meeting that the delegation is having is October sixth, where I'll present these these two requests to the delegation at that point in time as well. So I think that you you covered that pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. President. So not so much a question, a couple of quick comments. Number one, I just would like to compliment Councilman Huff in particular, you know, he enjoys a good relationship with some of our delegation in particular, I think the senator. And it's fantastic that he's, you know, taking advantage of that and doing something, frankly, you probably haven't done enough of in the past, to try to go after some of this funding. So I I'd like to say thank you for for doing that. It's I think it's great. I'd also like to comment, though, and I am very supportive of this, but I would like to comment particularly for folks that might be watching that heard the dollar amount of two point one million dollars for Wakeville. I want to be very clear that we are not committing any citizens' tax dollars to that project at this point. All we're doing is asking for the state to potentially fund Phase One, but by no means by by us asking for that, are we saying, hey, we're definitely going to do this, you know, at some point in time. So I just want to be clear on that. This letter is about asking the state to help us fund it. But I don't, I I'm hoping it doesn't get misinterpreted or misrepresented into now the council is ready to dump two point one million dollars into Wakeville Valley. Because, of course, I can only speak for myself, but that is certainly not the case as far as I'm concerned at this point. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that, Mr. President and Mr. Huff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Do it, Mr. President.
Well, so if not to get to that, I think, I don't know if we need a motion. I think that.
Consensus.
I think we've got, is everybody in agreement that we've all seen the letter, we've all had to make sure.
Ms. Imhals, did you say you were shaking your head? Do you think we need a motion? Okay.
I'd be comfortable with a motion, Mr. President.
Well, so who would like to take a motion outside of the mayor to sign this letter on behalf of the mayor and council?
Mr. Huff, you should make the motion.
I'll make a motion that that the we approved the letter, the draft of the letter for the present at the October sixth meeting.
All right, very good. Second by Mr. Dayhoff.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Any discussion I should say? Any discussion, all right? You want to vote, all of the favor? If I like to say aye, if I say nay, we have seen that, we have it. And the word is outside, sign the letter. Thank you. On the other side.
And the one thing I will add, we'll probably have another letter that'll come back to us for approval to go ahead and formally submit to the governor's office. Senator Reedy is supposed to be giving me some details regarding that process and exactly. And and, Mr. President, you're probably somewhat familiar with that from back in the day, I'm sure. So this is going to be a multi-stage stage process and we'll kind of move through the stages and keep our fingers crossed and because we end up with something. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's time now for the departmentally quit, Ms. Imhals.
Thank you all for your continued support. I'm coming up on three weeks now, I think. It's my stop counting at this point, but I've been enjoying my time here. Appreciate all the support from council. Yeah, again, I'm going to say this probably every time, we have really spectacular senior staff, a lot of experience up here, and we have been using that to solve a lot of problems. The letter that was just brought before you is an example of my commitment to continue to look for funding elsewhere for a long list of projects that we have going on or that we want to keep moving or we want to start. Thankfully, we're in a place where a lot of those things are outlined, which makes it a little bit easier to go look for funding. You have my commitment on that. I want to talk about Fall Fest for just a minute. I know we've already spoken about it quite a bit, so I won't take up too much of your time. That was my first Fall Fest in Westminster. I thought it was spectacular. I thought the parade was so fun. I really enjoyed myself. And maybe next year I'll have a chance to walk with you as well. You mentioned three departments that have really taken a brunt of the staff hours to make that event work, which is, of course, Public Works, the Police Department, and Recreation and Parks. There are a few other departments behind the scenes that are involved quite a bit before the event happens. I T did was out there and the Finance Department does a lot of work at the same time with the audit and it's the same time as a million other things going on. So it is really a huge staff effort to put on an event like this. And when it goes well, you don't notice it, right? The number of backup plans that happened because of the rain this week is kind of astounding. And we had a lot of soggy employees out there quite a bit. They had to bring in the other various vendors in advance in an attempt to try not to wreck the field at the same time. There's a lot of planning that goes into it and thought and mental energy. And and I just really appreciate all the staff effort and specifically Abby, who really puts in an enormous amount of work. So I gave her the night off tonight and I have her report for you. I'll start off with Abby's report. The new To Home a Farm Park sign was completed by Woodland Signs and received on Friday, September seventeenth. We're currently waiting for that to be installed. Once the sign is installed in the park, the final grant report will be submitted for that project. Big responses for the locker room renovation project were received and opened this past week. Staffs in the process of evaluating submissions. And we anticipate that council, mayor and council will see at your October eleventh meeting a contract award recommendation for that project. And reminder that oyster, that staff are recovering from a very successful Fall Fest and working hard to quickly shift into preparations for the oyster straw, which is, of course, scheduled for Saturday, October ninth. And then Abby will give a Fall Fest report on the October eleventh meeting, once she's had it, get all those numbers together. All right, I'm going to move on to Public Works now.
Really, no report. Two things that I did want to say, that thank you for the kind words about the, you know, the Public Works does to support a Fall Fest. And then the second thing is to wish Shannon well. Worked with her the whole time she's worked here. I don't think anybody's worked here longer than I have, but so. But anyway, certainly wish you well. Wish you well, but I understand that, so best of luck. That's all.
I T.
So we often do a report, but we didn't receive any applications for the helpless job. We're going to do a loving honest week and if they're going to do, bring in three for final review, make a selection. I like to wish Shannon well, so it was great looking good, and she will be missed.
I T.
Thank you. I just want to look to the mayor and council that we've had an opportunity to update our website for housing. If you can get a chance, take a quick look at it. If there are things that you think we need to add or clarify, then shoot me an email and we'll do that. So what would you say?
Nothing for planning the general commission or for the other deals this month. Though unusual, we don't have applications for either of those. The Historic District Commission will be doing a historic tax credit application at twelve North Church Street. That's a residential property. The historic tax credit facade improvement program application for one sixteen East Main Street. That is the future of Cavella Spirit property. A facade improvement program application for one twenty-one East Main Street, which right across the street. It's a big story brick building. No, no, I don't understand the use of that building and what they're planning to do as far as potential businesses. And of course, the demolition permit for two eighty-eight East Main Street will be before the H T C as well for a recommendation. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Depple? Looks like they've already begun the demolition. Looks like they put the roof up already.
Yeah.
Kind of check that on that.
I did. I spoke to Dean Camlin is actually working with the with the property owner, who just purchased it, I think, a year ago. And it is in rough shape. And I my understanding was the roof was not stable. So to get actually into the building and look at anything, that was one of the things that had to be taken care of initially, unfortunately. Again, it's not in a good, not in good shape. It is one of the oldest buildings in the world. About cabin was on site, maybe they find the presence of the long cabins, so that will be something we'll bring up, the H T C, if there's a way we can reuse those in some way. But, but yes, the roof is is missing, unfortunately.
Evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to echo best wishes to Shannon and also say I'm sorry to see you again. Also, we're continuing to work, actively working investigations into last week's bank robbery at New Windsor State Bank. We have some leads we're following, as well as in the stronger robbery at the Westminster shopping center parking lot. We are offering up to a thousand dollar worth of information leading to either suspect on this investigation. Last week, last Wednesday evening, we held our monthly community focus group meeting virtually, where we brief participants regarding proactive initiatives, crime trends, incidents burdened out by patrol sector and upcoming special events. We also answered several questions posed, and we discussed some crime prevention strategies. Any Westminster resident or business center is welcome to join this group. We meet virtually for now monthly, just either call or email us. You can find our information on the website if you don't have it. Last week, we presented four of our police officers, Kevin Chinaki, Corey Ty, Liam Lash, and Phoenix Russell with the Police Officer First Class designation. The P S C designation signifies that the officer has successfully completed his eighteen month probationary status and has also demonstrated a skill set, proficiency of duties, and character consistent with the mission and values of our department. On Saturday, September eighteenth, we participated in the sixth annual We Say No to Do. the sixth annual We Say No to Dope Walk and Softball Game. The softball game was a friendly scrimmage between a law enforcement team and a recovery community team. Let's just say that we didn't win. The event was well-attended and involved a very positive message regarding addiction, recovery, and awareness. We're also continuing to interview, we did have a really good group of applicants that applied for the Police Administrative Services Manager position. So we've done resume reviews, we interviewed seven, and we're going to call in two for a final. That's all.
Ms. Imholtz, if I might add something quickly. You know, the chief had let me know about some of the applicants that applied for this staff position, this civilian position, and he kind of told me the background, some of the folks that applied, and actually know, I think, one or two of them, maybe. But as I was listening to him, I hung up the phone, and then I started thinking it through a little bit, because these are people that are in the law enforcement community, and in some cases, in high-ranking positions that they may be retiring from. And I'm thinking, man, it's unbelievable that they're applying for this. And then it dawned on me as to why. And that's because they want to work for Tom Ledwell. And I was, you know, it really hit home to have folks of that caliber apply for the job, talks about the reputation that he has within the law enforcement community. And I could tell you, it's, it's top-notch. Sheriff Dewey cannot say enough good things about him every time I talk to him. And this, this is a perfect, I think, illustration of the fact that we are incredibly fortunate to have a chief like, like Chief Ledwell on, you know, with us. And I'm grateful for it. And I know everybody else up here is as well. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I feel the same way, and I feel that about all of our departments as well. Not that many times have we all gets individually shy, but this is a good example. Thank you for bringing that up. Finance?
So, thank you, our mayor and our council. We have begun work on the audit. As you know, it's, it's quite a bit of work, but we're getting our way through it, and we'll have an audit report for you soon, yes. I just wanted to thank Abby's team for taking some time during their busy planning of the success with Fall Fest, to spend some time with me and go over the financial aspects of it. I know that, that it's not an easy thing to do when you're dealing with a million other, other things regarding the Fall Fest, but they were very gracious in doing that, and helping me to understand how different things, aspects of the finance world in the Fall Fest work. And because of that, I think we had a good understanding of how things work, and things were able to move smoothly with them. So thank you to Abby and her team especially as well for that. That is all I have for today.
So I'd just like to invite thanking Shannon, who will be, this is Shannon's last meeting with us. I unfortunately only had the opportunity to work with Shannon shortly. She was moving on to a wonderful opportunity, and I just wanted to remind the council that the elections really are on the staff side, are put together by the city clerk. And while I wasn't here for that, for those elections that Shannon worked on, that she was almost entirely handling that on her own. So we really appreciate your dedication and all the extra hours that she put in. And on behalf of the mayor and council in the city, we want to thank you for your service to the city. Thank you. So we have a report, the fire company.
Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. I think the last report for the fire company was August the 9th, but by first, Vice President Tim Banger, but I don't think he gave the statistics at that time. He bought up that we're bringing back Bingo for fundraising at the fire company, and that apparently is going really well. And that's a good thing, because the Bingo really brings a lot of the community together. So let's get the July and August fire company statistics into the record. The total calls in July were 604. 511 of those calls were EMS, 93 were fire, 367 were in the city limits, 185 were outside the city limits. And 55% of the time, we had overlapping calls in which we had to bring in either Reese, or New Windsor, or Pleasant Valley, to help us out with the call volume. In August 2021, we had 565 calls for service, 472 were EMS, 93 were fire, 318 were in the city, and 210 were outside the city. So far this year, we've had 87 more fire calls than last year, and we've had 223 more EMS calls. We will easily go over 7,000 EMS calls this year, and that's, that's a lot of calls. So far, the equipment and the training is holding up, but it's a constant challenge. I would also like to mention that at 6 o'clock on Sunday, October 3rd, 2021, St. John Catholic Church will conduct its annual Blue Mass service, which will honor the fire service across the county, and the police agencies across the county, and the Maryland State Police, and the sheriff's office. And I'd like to take the opportunity to echo Mr. Kabachi's remarks, that I also heard from a number of folks who applied for the job, and applied for the job because they wanted to work with you. So I think that's pretty cool. I think that's good stuff. Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. That's my report.
That concludes the departmental reports.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Imholtz. Final item on our agenda, citizen comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda, or any other city issues. For citizens who's not attended the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments or concerns to our city clerk at comments@westgup.com. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. And now, for those who might be here in person, is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to be heard? See, no one?
We should get the log and the report.
We, we get that, ultimately, if we like, I think. So, thank you. So, you know, so, let me just, before we adjourn, let me just say this. Sometimes, one of the privileges of being council president is you can get the last word in. I don't always, but once in a while I do. And I just want to say, as council president, I've had the pleasure of working with our city clerk, I think probably more closely than anybody else. And it's been a real pleasure to have that opportunity. You know, there's lots of skills that a city clerk needs to have, but above all else, it's one quality that the city clerk needs to have, and that's trust. And, you know, over the last several years that Shannon has been our city clerk, she's been privy to a lot of conversations and information that, you know, nobody else in the city gets to hear outside the elected body. And we've never, ever, in all that time, doubted that we could trust Shannon, you know, to, to keep our confidence, and to manage, you know, the things that we need her to do, in the right way. So, you know, here. Shannon, we deeply appreciate all the good for us. Thank you very much, and we wish you all the best in the next stage of your life. Thank you so much. That concludes our agenda and the meeting. We're going to chance, let's see, our next regular meeting will be on Monday, October 11th. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Please stay safe and healthy.